Good evening. This is City. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council, Warrbeaming. Date of date is August 15, 2022. Time is 6:00 PM. This meeting has been advertised in City's favor performance with open public. I mean that otherwise not. Sunshine law. Roll call.
Swan. David Ford. Femalaram.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
Father.
And it's an emotional power. So for the pool, we're going to bring this now.
Motion.
Second. On the favor.
Aye.
That's average.
Okay. Person agenda is second reading, ordinance number 13. Public hearing will be held during regular session. Addendum chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the city code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
Any questions?
Resolution was.
Second reading.
Second reading. Public hearing will be held during regular session.
Any questions? Next.
Okay. Resolution 157, authorizing the tax collector to cancel tax in sewer delinquencies of less than $10.
Any questions?
Resolution 158, authorizing imposition of a penalty on tax delinquencies and access of $10,000.06.
Any questions?
Resolution 159, authorizing tax collector to participate in electronic tax sale for the tax year 2022.
Any questions?
Resolution 160, authorizes tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax sale for the tax year 2022.
Any questions?
Yes, question. Um, this is in place now, correct?
Uh huh.
Or is this something new? Is it placed?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Resolution 161, allow the tax collector to contact tax lien investor, ruralauction.com to handle our electronic tax sale.
Good question.
Same question. This is the place already.
So let me just clarify that here if I can. So items 157 through 160. Four for all your annual tax items that we must approve through council annually to conduct the tax sales. So as regarding the delinquencies, the fees, the procedures, the vendor, et cetera.
But something has changed.
Nothing has changed with those items.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions? Second.
Resolution 162, authorizing the billing of special charges to property owners for work performed on neglected properties.
Any questions?
Resolution 163, authorizing tax collector to cancel taxes on certain properties.
Any questions?
Resolution 164, authorizing tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties. Next is 165. Resolution 165, to add on, awarded the contract Trinity Code inspection for the third-party inspection and plan review for the subcoats of electrical plumbing, fire, and building.
Any questions?
Next is review of the bill list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we're first we're over bills have a page between last council meeting and this one. That'll be your check where you should by check date. Uh, which was small with the very top. We're, because we're looking left, go left, went down the bottom. Uh, you see 1.465, that's payment of debt service that we got money back. We kind of wrote overall the debtor. Uh, seven, seventy, $772. Day of day, green acres, uh, containment, um, have. It's a 556 of the funeral and a million 042 were taxes, the tax paid before, actually paid today. Looking at bills to be approved and new items. Uh, we'll go down the middle, we'll start with the land care position group. Uh, this is the first physical that are performed for potential unemployed, police and fire, as well as doing whatever testing needed to do, make sure they qualify for the position. Going to, um, the middle of page two, Atlantic kind of gift. This is our third quarter pay for corporate liability, working compensation, automobile, anything that the city owns, um, is covered there property wise as well as liability and work income for, uh, the employees of $398,000. That's split between a portion of it under sort section, the balance, I think leaves like $99,000 of that was paid under sort, the balance of two, two seventy years paid out of the current fund. Go to page three, you'll see, uh, headway down gen serve. Uh, you know, there's a generator between the police department and the firehouse that was under fix. We had someone come in and take care of that. Have to go to page four. Now, we do this every once mailing and office supply, that's our cloud storage for all the information that's generated through our computer, both the police, fire, financial, and everything else. And down few workers centered for government. Uh, as we talked about before, we try and get people trained in their field. This is for one of our tax collectors. There's a student trying to get her activated and earn, earn the title of tax collector. There's like four or five courses she has to take, so it pays to say test. We, what we normally do, we will front money for the first test. Uh, if they fail, they reimburse us, but we haven't had any problem. And this, I believe, is the second of two for our employee and tax office.
This is our first time?
Pardon me?
I mean, I'm sorry. This is our first course?
First, no, this is a class.
This is our first class?
No, this is our type one. And this is taking, uh, she's taking one on a weekend. This is a Zoom class on a weekend.
No, I thought you said we paid for the first one.
Uh, we very paid her for, for, we were, she very had to take, she took the first one at the beginning of the year.
So we paid for the second one?
This is the second one. The second, there are four classes she has taken.
And we paid for all four.
She took, this is her second.
But we will.
She will take all four.
No, we will pay for all four?
Yes. Normally, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
It's a hard time hearing with the.
That's all right.
Yes, see. Um, on top, on page five, we're looking at the, uh, school taxes for, um, the month of August. Uh, in that is a portion of debt service that's in the tax bill that taxpayers pay. So we normally send out $814,000. In August, we will send out 878 because part of the collection that we collect is $63,000 of their debt service, which we spread out so to all of them know how much debt service being paid, uh, that we collect and how much just the tax levy. We go to page six. Uh, top of page six is our township. This is, uh, the second quarter for our IT services, share services, and second quarter for our dispatch services. We would normally pay this earlier in August, but because we're a little short on money in, in June and July, they gave us a little grace period to, we'll worry about that. We'll worry about third quarter probably sometime in October. And then near the bottom, which is nutrition. That is for the summer food program. That is a grant from the Nutraceutical Department of Agriculture where we feed, uh, different people, kids and from seniors, uh, practice and lunch throughout the summer. I believe it, it already ended, I think last Friday was the last day of it. But we, we get reimbursed, actually very heavily reimbursed. Now we're paying out the, the cost of the, of the food.
On page six, uh, the U.S. Security Association?
Yes.
Is that for the library?
That's the library, and we do get reimbursed about also. On a, on a.
Does people, do they require, it seems to be a corporation, does that, or association? Do they require that officer to undergo, you know, like some kind of field test?
They're all licensed carers. They're licensed to carry. They're armed guards. And no, most of them are usually retired, uh, police officers. Uh, but they've asked, we used to have security guards that were making a lot of that money, but they were having problems over there. So they asked us to look into getting security armed guards. Again, in county, we'll, this reimbursement, that's what it's cost.
I, I understand, but I, I just don't like the idea of the armed guard, that, I mean, somebody has an overdoing.
Well, I think the problem, we were having a problem with transient board coming in.
And I can tell you that may be helpful to ease some of your concerns with having an armed officer in your library. I understand what that feeling, you know, what that perception may look like. We've been in a fortunate situation where we have a retired police officer from our police department that's working over there. So he's very familiar with the children, the staff, and the community. There's a lot of interaction. And I can tell you, since we've had that type of assignment, we've, we've had less incidents over there, if any, that I'm aware of, um, because the person is familiar with the community. So it kind of takes away from, I gotta go on the, you know, so, because he knows the, the children.
I have a question about, um, the numbers here. So the first, the 2,000, that's for, um, July, and 800 is for August. How come this is different?
It depends on the amount of days that they work.
Okay.
Um, and if they're close, um, and that's, that's just a bill that comes in, but it's normally based on the number of hours that they work over there.
Next is public portion or agenda item.
Next is public portion or agenda item. What's the number four is people agenda item.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
This might not be a agenda item, but it's, uh, a little statement on the board of board education.
You want to, you want to hold it to another session?
You want me to hold it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next, talk, little discussion. Council, three.
We're going to close.
Motion. Thank you. Motion close.
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Next is, uh, open for discussion. Discussing that on the jump. Sorry, I just want to ask you, from the action uniform, why are, you know, why are these prices on the uniforms, police uniforms?
The uniforms?
Yes.
There are, uh, there actually, there's probably a couple of things on there for uniforms. Uh, one is, uh, we, it's new issue for police and fire when we hire people. There's also another one in there where we, uh, the fire department has to get turnout gear, boots, helmets, and you know. And then there's a uniform under, uh, air mark where we provide uniform for, uh, public work department, street department. Uh, that's more like a rental than anything else. Um, and it's just a weekly fee that we pay.
No, I just want, I'm glad you, uh, mentioned that. So for, um, the past three, do we get reimbursed from the school?
We will get reimbursed, but they've been built out yet. Just like we, we get reimbursed for the time that they spend there, which we build out to, um, quite about a couple of weeks ago, beginning of March early for that.
Next. Council, five.
I don't.
Council, yes, of course. Motion close of the session.
Necessary motion.
All of you. Again, this is City President, City Council, uh, Warrbeaming. Date of date is August 15, 2022. Time is, uh, 6:45 PM. This meeting has been advertised in City's favor performance with open public. If otherwise, not, it's sunshine law. Would you please stand for indication and, uh, more. How far, how far, gentlemen? I'll be there. I'm looking at, I don't know, because it is, uh, because today, I think they're, I think it was a transfer house. It's been a good, uh, straight address, but it's, it's, uh, it's a presentation. I don't know if it's, uh, we, uh, we, uh, I don't know. You want to leave this? Two, three. United States of America, and just, uh, for which it is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Swan. David Ford. Femalaram.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
Six and ten. Five.
Motion. Second.
Aye.
Where are you having your conversation?
Yeah.
Okay. Back and forth.
Okay. Person agenda is ordinance number 13, public hearing is required. Is amending chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the city code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city?
This is second reading. We go from the public leading speaker on this, uh, this agenda.
I didn't even reference a cannabis. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Archie, President Bill.
Good evening.
Uh, see.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Okay. Um, on the cannabis side, we have heard in fact that they have the communities that have made, you know, out pretty well, once, uh, what is it called? Distributor? Whatever you want to call it, cannabis stand, came to your, your town. So is President Bill in likelihood of making any monies from this?
Yes, Mr. Archie.
Okay. Can I go a little further next? How does it work as far as monies? Is it based on percentage or is it just a total? Femalaram?
It's just 2% on each sale, in terms of items, and also, uh, there was a fee, a fee, you know, like a license, a license, a fee. Cannabis is an actual license.
Okay. So license plus a 2% on sales. Is that right? Thank you.
Seeing anyone else to speak? I need a motion to.
Public portion?
Public portion for, for public hearing of ordinance number 13. Seeing anyone? No one? I need a motion to close the public hearing. Necessary motion. Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, need a motion for roll call?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum. What is that for the doctor? I don't know. I need order, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Resolution 157, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes, sewer delinquencies of less than $10.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 158, authorizing the imposition of a penalty on tax delinquencies and access of $10,000.06.
This is a motion.
Second. Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 159, authorizing tax collector to participate in electronic tax sale for the tax year 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 160, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax sale for tax year 2022.
This is a motion.
Second. Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 161, allow the tax collector to contact tax lien investor, ruralauction.com to handle our electronic tax sale.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 162, authorizing the billing of special charges to property owners for work performed on neglected properties.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 163, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes on certain properties.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 164, authorizing the tax collector to refund taxes on certain properties.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 165, to add on, awarded the contract to Trinity Code inspections for the third-party inspection and plan review for subcoats of electrical plumbing, fire, and building.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. And the motion approved bill was?
Necessary motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas? Yes, when everything is set, six, 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 six. Aye? Very well, so noted. Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Motion approved. Need motion to approve a bingo and rap for license?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Femalaram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion. If you want to, the public just speak on, uh, this public portion, say your name.
My name is actress, Cie Hong. Mr. President, I have an ass here to, to spin the rules, and let's give me maybe a couple minutes beyond your five-day rule. I'm here tonight to make an overall appeal for employees for our school system. Uh, it is known, I know by all of you, that it's a national shortage of teachers and even other positions. So speaking with our active superintendent today, I have a low this year, but I'll run through it as quick as possible, what we need. I'm saying it this way to my, your councilperson, you know, everyone is simple. If you have relatives and friends, uh, get on the phone and call them and tell them that we have jobs in Pleasantville school system. Uh, teachers, we need, uh, three science teachers, uh, four math teachers, uh, United States World Language, uh, four teachers, uh, the Reserve Austin Training Corps, that's ROTC, that person does not have to have a DS or MS degree, uh, just the necessary training in their military ranks. Uh, you need a music teacher on the elementary level, librarian, high school, uh, technology high school. We need bus drivers, uh, substitute teachers. I became ill when I found out that substitute worked at homeschool year last year, and I literally went home and I got sick from the worst ill, because I just couldn't believe that happened. But when you don't have the personnel, that's what they have to do. And that's why I'm standing for you tonight to make sure that when we reopen school in September, that we will have the appropriate educators to educate, uh, our children. We need teacher aides, uh, and adding to our curriculum, uh, we are looking at solar energy, uh, which comes under involvement of science. That is something that doesn't exist right now in our high school in Pleasantville. We're going to make an effort to be the first. President Biden signed a deal today, and millions of dollars to look at, uh, the solar energy. And you know, we're having weather conditions now, just hundred plus. So that would be a great thing if we can make that happen. Cover the arts. Uh, we want to bring skill from ACIP. I want to board up there, but we're going to try to get cover the arts back in Pleasantville program. We have nine casinos, and they need good cooks. So everybody doesn't have to go away and get a four-year college degree, because we have decent economical, good prices, uh, applications right here in, uh, Atlantic County. My other issue now is municipal. Uh, a job that I wasn't able to do in 51 years, uh, sitting for your city. Uh, the train, the train, track across the Black Rose Drive near, uh, the, the bakery, I think, and the old post office, but the train track comes across there. And now, the side at Busfield, I mean, it's, uh, it's a suicide. And I did mention to our city administrator today, and, uh, Ms. Peyton has some information for me. So Ms. Peyton, through the chair, if you wish to speak now or later, that'd be okay. But my point is that we have the mayor of Pleasantville who's united with our Pleasantville Foundation. And we're ready to get the paintbrush and go to work, but you know, you have to go through a lot of matters before you do that. Ms. Peyton, you have anything to add for me?
As Mr. Harmon stated, he did bring that, his concern to, um, my attention today. And not only did he bring that to my attention today, as he said, when he was a sitting council person, and as with one of his, uh, part of his agenda and initiative to make sure that, um, we do some work there as, as it is in my school for the city. I advised councilmen, and I think most of you know what I just reiterated for the public state, that that overpass, that bridge has been hit by some type of excavator or something within the last thirty or sixty days or so. Um, we have our fire department, our DGW, our police department, our engineers all involved in the assessment of the work that needs to be done there. What is pending at this point is, uh, the city determining who has jurisdiction over that, and Cooper Levinson is now working on that. I think we've done a title search, and we're doing some other work involved with the state, including NJDOT to find out who has jurisdiction. Once we find out who has jurisdiction, we're waiting to see what the assessment is from our engineers to see the type of damage that was done in the condition of the bridge. And we're hopeful that if it's either, um, JP rail or the city, that we could join together and get some, utilize the infrastructure money that is out there to get it repaired or, uh, enhanced, and then take on some of the ideas that Mr. Harmon has mentioned and, and have people come in to help us, uh, repair the bridge, potentially advertise the bridge and, and some other things. So we are working on it.
I know it was a question of, Council, you're, you're referencing to be a native assignment there. So you already had an angry about your reference to.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. And Mr. President, I didn't give a phone number, but you can easily get the number to the Board of Education.
Can you give us all our phone number right now?
I think it's four eight four eight to four hundred, but I'm not sure.
It's three eight three sixty-eight hundred.
And what is it there?
Three eight three sixty-eight hundred.
Three eight three sixty-eight hundred. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And before you'll catch your time.
Thank you for playing us on the lightness like you always do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President, fellow council members, mayor, officials of the city. I'm here for two reasons. First of all, I'd like to commend the city for providing a very beautiful recreation center in the city of Pleasantville, which I have the pleasure of using just about every week when it's open to the adults. It's well-kept and it's definitely an asset, a blessing for our community. I also like to commend the city for responding to the complaints about the speeds on Brighton Avenue by putting the speed bumps up. I think that was a great idea. But I also want to comment on one of the issues that I constantly observed while going to the rec center. I walked to that rec center when it's open to the adults about three times a week, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And I always walk by the playground. And it's a beautiful playground, well-kept. The only problem is it's locked. And it's locked all the time throughout the day. And I made mention, you know, to the members of the building there that, you know, why it shouldn't be locked, because it's a playground and the kids can't get to the playground. So playground is not a playground that the kids can't play on. Long story short, I mean, it's not too, and I don't think it really needs to be locked because there's nothing there that could be stolen from the playground. If there's a concern about people congregating on the playground, I hope it would be the kids because I'd rather them to congregate there as opposed to being on the streets. And there's even one time that I observed kids climbing over the fence to get into the playground. And I brought that to the attention of the powers that be. And I said, well, they shouldn't be doing that. But my response was, well, it shouldn't be locked. So I also had the opportunity of speaking to a resident who lives very near the playground, almost right across the street. And she has three kids. And she said, this summer, the kids only have one opportunity to play at that playground because it's always locked. So my request is just if it's a public playground for the kids, let's make it available for the kids, that's all. We, there's no need to lock it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And you did for the members of the city?
I'm sorry, I didn't do, my name is Alan Maddox, Mulberry Avenue, Pleasantville. Thank you.
I need to know which playground you're referring to, the one on Mulberry?
The one right by the rec center, recreation center.
So that's the Mulberry Avenue?
That's the Mulberry Avenue, yes. That's the one I walk by when I go to the rec center.
All right, thank you, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hope for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Cory Kern, the chairwoman of the commissioner board. And John Russey is the co-chair. We had a couple of members of your, or a couple of your constituents ask us at the last, our last meeting to come to some of your meetings. And which is great, we appreciate the invite. And I apologize because I did try reaching out, but I shouldn't try reaching out the day of my meeting. But I was trying to let you know that, you know, John and I were going to come. But maybe we can give you a couple updates. So highway improvement projects. So we have Route Nine to Kingston is going out to bids. And Delilah Road in Pleasantville, Main Street to Route Nine is being awarded at tomorrow's meeting. And I think we have finished the renovation of our workforce development project as well. And under design right now is Main Street and West Jersey. And that is going to be going out to bid probably spring twenty twenty-three. So, John?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here, mayor and council. Both of us have served in city councils before, so we know what that's all about as well. And of course, Pleasantville is near and dear to my heart because first mayor was my great-great uncle. And he buried his park as a cemetery. And he was mayor under the Brusleyville before it was Pleasantville. So it's, I have a one spark, spot in my heart of Pleasantville. And anything we can do to help, I just hope we're here for. You know, county government really has one major mission, one major function. And that's to provide services to the cities and the county that they cannot provide for themselves. That's what we do as county commissioners, homeless and free workers. I've been in the wood for twenty-one years, so it's a hard habit to break. But we want to let you know that we're here, we're available. You know, please call us, write us a letter, whatever, reach out to us if there's something we can help in a small way. Maybe some extra work park or maybe something in the city we can do. Please call us, we're available.
Yeah, and we are, we would appreciate any calls if you need anything from us, you know, county-wise. And services, if some of your people, you know, or constituents need certain services and need to connect with somebody and just don't know who. That's sometimes the hardest part because we really do have quite a bit of services thoroughly in the county. And we'd love to be able to connect people with the right person, you know, that they need. So let us know, we'd be happy to, you know, to help anyone that's in need of those services. So, and if you, again, need anything from us, please, please give us a call.
Want to come to me, come with me?
Yeah, as some of your constituents have been doing, which is great because they care about your city just as well.
I was told you had the invitation, so thanks for taking.
Yeah, thank you.
My very good.
Thank you. I do have a question, thank you guys. Because my office gets inundated with these calls, specifically during the pandemic. We have a great senior population here that has challenging times in fixing their heating system and roofing and all of that. At one time, the county had a fix-it program. I've been, you know, directing those people to the county and I'm being told that they're not getting a response. So if there's some way that you can look into it to see if that is still up and running, this whole fix-it is supposed to be for seniors, and you can get back to us, I would appreciate that and if you can get back to our community.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, okay, thank you.
Well, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else want to talk?
How you doing?
Good, man.
Okay.
Evening, mayor, thank you, council.
Good afternoon.
Okay, first of all, I had spoken to Mayor Julia Long about the streets, the condition of the streets. And she told me that nothing could be done about them until the underground sewage was repaired. When is that going to happen? We don't have a decent street hardly in Pleasantville to ride in. We need to get paid to ride these streets, they are so full of holes, I mean, everywhere, everywhere. And also now I see that Ansley Boulevard is being torn up. Is that for the project of those places going down at the old high school?
No, it isn't. It's a road improvement program for the infrastructure and also the streets and sidewalks.
Okay. Well, when are the other streets going to be done?
The best way for me to answer that is advise you that the city is working on what we call the street improvement list, where we assess the conditions of the streets and then we prioritize the conditions of the street. And then we tackle the highest, so they're rated from one to five. Five meaning that they're in poorest condition. And so we look for funding to address those streets first. Most of our street improvement money comes from NJDOT through Transit Village and municipal aid and local aid. So as the funding sources are available annually, we try to take most of that money and allocate it or earmark it for those streets that are in the poorest condition. What we've learned in the most recent years is that even though we see the condition of the streets, that there's infrastructure issues. So as you know, we've been talking about infrastructure for a long period of time. So part of the assessment now is to have all of the streets camered so that we know what the infrastructure looks like before we earmark the streets for road improvement. Because you can't do the road improvement if there's infrastructure issues underneath of it. So to directly answer your question, we're working on a updated street improvement list. But if you have a street, a particular street in mind, you can call my office and I can tell you where we're at with that particular street because I just don't have that information off the top of my head to give you a date for when a certain street is going to be repaired.
Okay, so now they've torn up the Boulevard here. That's going to be paved?
Yes. You're talking about Ansley Boulevard, ma'am? Yeah, so yeah, they're starting with the infrastructure work. Once the infrastructure is corrected or repaired or upgraded, then they're going to do the streets and sidewalks.
Also, where is the street cleaner? I haven't seen a street cleaner in Pleasantville and I don't know when. Is it broke again? That's what I used to be told every time I would call. I was broke, I was broke, okay?
I can find out what's, what schedule is on for your street. Where, what street are you doing on?
Actually, I'm right.
Okay, I'll find out pretty.
There is one out there?
There is a schedule for street cleaning. So I'll find out when your street is scheduled to be swept. It's either once or twice a week, but I'll find out. Yeah, I'll find out, I'll find out for you specifically.
Perfect. And the repair that's being done, that has nothing to do with those apartments that's supposed to go down there at the old Pleasantville High School?
Well, it's not part of that project, but it is, hopefully enhance what we're going to, what we're planning to place down there. But this is a separate project from the redevelopment project.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just examples, so, just examples. Can I have your full name put up?
Vandor, Vandor Ed.
Thank you, ma'am. It's Patricia's mom.
Anybody?
Yeah, I do a lot.
You know, everyone.
Hello.
I have a concern about Ashland and Route Nine. There is a tree there, but it's to the point now where it's blocking your view. If you come out, come down Ashland, get to Route Nine, and you want to make a left, you can't hardly see because this tree has been branched out. So I don't know whose responsibility that is, but it's going to cause an accident one of these days.
I have someone looking to that right away.
And my next concern is, may I remember time you went in a tractor trailer? Well, today, when I just rode by there. That same tractor is there, the cab is open, and it's a pan underneath like oil's dripping. So I don't know if the truck broke down and trying to fix it right there or what. But the truck was there all weekend and now it's back again.
Who said, I'm just going?
Right on, Ashland.
Ashland. I'll report that tomorrow's bill.
So who do you report to?
So you can do seven things. There's a public service link on our website, right on the homepage. You don't have to look for it, it's right on your homepage. It will say public service. You can go right in there and just put in the problem and that automatically goes right, is populated to what the problem is involved. Or you can call my office. I think those are the better two ways to call and then I'll make sure that it gets to the proper department.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, one more thing, sorry. There's a gentleman, which I just saw, coming down Main Street. The white guy that's out there begging and begging and begging. Is there no way that we can get him away from there? Okay. He, this evening, he was stumbling all across the highway, all in the way, and then, you know, begging for money. And then if you don't give him any money, he gives you the finger. Yes.
Is that the one in front of Dunkin' Donuts?
He's everywhere, yeah.
He's everywhere.
No, you're not scratching a little more than Main Street.
He changes up. He almost got hit when I was coming down. He just ducked it, then he took his shirt off and he's walking across the highway. You know, he needs to be moved somewhere, you know, because first of all, he's going to get hit. Plus, he's a danger to traffic. So then if you hit him, it's going to be dreadful, okay? Yeah, he gives you the finger when you don't pay him. All right, so I thought had that I made a shooting.
Anyone else?
You call me all night, I'm doing that.
Nah, that you, you can call me all night. Jill Archie, Nega Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Judy Moore and City Council.
Good evening.
Such a nice evening. Agenda items. And when I get finished this one, it's for the mayor clerk and for Judy Moore. And mayor clerk, could you please make sure that each councilperson gets home easy, okay? Thank you. Agenda items, it's a question I have a reference still. It's been some time now, in reference to our agenda we have at the board meeting, council meeting, since I asked the question to have a full disclosure of all agenda items before upcoming council meetings on the city webpage. Ms. Linda Peyton, city administrator and attorney stated that it would be no problem to have this information placed on the city's webpage for all to review. As of August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, there is no full disclosure of all agenda items. When will this small man appear on the city Pleasantville webpage? Please let me get finished. If you want to answer, you can answer. If not, you can answer right, okay? Because it's directed to the man. Number two, city vehicles. I have made aware that some city vehicles have taken home, I'm sorry. I have made aware that some city vehicles are taken home after employees have completed their shifts and kept over the weekend by various departments. Some vehicles are driven to Millville, New Jersey each day, also kept throughout the weekend. If this is true, how many vehicles and what departments are benefiting from this practice in the city of Pleasantville? What I'm alluding to for the practice style. Number three, funding options for sewer projects. I had a brief conversation with Lanes M. Waturla, that's the name, in regards to the grants funding such as FEMA, EDA, I guess that's it, New Jersey IB and New Jersey DOT in the form of grants and or low-interest loans for the following streets. Seventy-five percent grant through FEMA for Cedar Crest and Dowdy Pumping Station. Three hundred thousand total project cost. Eighty to one percent grant funding through EDA, here is act for Ash Town. Ansley Boulevard Sewer Lines, four hundred and fifty thousand total project cost. Fifty to seventy-five percent interest-free financing through New Jersey IB for various projects totaling approximately three point seven million. One hundred percent grant funding through NJDOT for roadwork, five hundred thousand annually. Further, the New Jersey IB has at times offered principal forgiveness on outstanding loans, which ultimately, I guess equates to a grant type of. Additionally, due to the impact of COVID-nineteen, there may be additional funding options available at the federal level. So, did the city of Pleasantville get the grants for the above locations and where are we? Number four, funding for the two thousand twenty-one budget. As we all know, our business administrator makes one percent higher than the average and eighty-nine percent higher than the median salaries in the city of Pleasantville. In two thousand sixteen, our business administrator made one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four. Two thousand nineteen, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five. Two thousand twenty, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine. What are the plans for the city of Pleasantville? This is not to smirk at anyone, so don't take the wrong word. It's just dealing with business. What are the plans for the city of Pleasantville to keep this from happening again? Will the city be looking into placing a cap on this and other salary positions? Number five, police and fire department. For the salaries of the city, police and fire department, meaning salaries of the city. Can you please explain why the two thousand twenty-one budget for the police under salaries and wages is six million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand and other expenses, four hundred and ninety-five thousand? Fire department salaries and wages, all the savings in the budget for twenty-one. Four million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand and four hundred dollars in other expenses, ninety-eight thousand. Last, number six, two thousand twenty-one budget, general appropriations. Please explain what is the meaning of the word other expenses? Number seven, for salaries, I'm sorry, for sheets, pages, slash, because there's any budgets called sheets, Number seven, for salaries, I'm sorry, for sheets, pages, slash, because there's any budgets called sheets, not pages. Pages twelve to fifteen day. Please give details how this was spent in reference to, as it stated, other expenses and salaries. You get your salaries, then talk about other expenses. I was looking forward to getting maybe a itemized on what the other expenses are, because this is coming out of the budget for twenty-one. So what would those items be? Because that's a lot of money. Also to end, and that is, this is a, this is a, a part, I don't know if it's major, but this is a part that has, contributes to everyone's taxes in Pleasantville. So if we look into this, so this doesn't happen again, if we look into this, see what the expenses are, and if we look into this, see these vehicles that are being utilized. And there's others, but not to delay my time and owe time towards council and city administrators. Um, this is seriously need to be looked upon because Pleasantville is a small, uh, uh, city. And if there's anything that we can do, some of the officials, uh, for the taxpayers of Lansing to bring the, um, taxes down, let's be about that. Outside of this, just want to say, any entity coming into Pleasantville, if it hasn't been already, can you please stop giving these abatements to bring businesses in to help encourage them to come to the city to bring, I guess, Pleasantville up? Because we still on its, uh, backend, we're not getting any relief from. If you want to do that, give them a time frame. It's five or ten years, but you can't give free rise and can't be for thirty years. That's not going to work for the city of Pleasantville taxpayers. Because we get the short end of the stick. But I understand what you're trying to do. But the taxpayers, we need relief as well. And council people, mayor, uh, business administrator, clerk, attorney fee in Pleasantville, we pay a lot in taxes. So whatever you can do to bring that down, we need your help.
Your statement about the abatements, is that in your letter?
Uh, no, that is not.
Okay.
The baby is not.
Council President, I think in an effort not to single out any issue, would it be okay if your administration responds fully and right to this to Archie's response?
Thank you, that would be fine.
I don't know if you'll get one at the next meeting, but certainly they're trying to go through it as soon as possible. I still want to comment on the next meeting.
I, I understand. Um, just to ask you a follow-up question on that.
Sure.
Can you give me a timeframe around about, if it's not next meeting, the meeting after?
Do they update you in writing?
Excuse me?
Do they give you a response in writing?
Sure.
Again, they have had an opportunity to review.
No, that's why I put in writing, because I know it's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the public?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, my name is Renee Brown. I address one two six West Avenue. I wanted to ask about, um, resolution one sixty-three and one sixty-four, authorizing the tax, collecting canceled taxes on certain properties and to refund taxes on certain, certain properties. Can, can anybody clear that up for me?
Why is this happening?
Sorry.
I was asking CFO if you'd want me to answer this.
Well, I can, we're looking at one sixty?
Whoever.
No, I guess.
Sixty-three, sixty-four. One sixty-three is resolution cancel taxes. Three of them were for employee, um, citizens or hard set, disabled veterans. We had built them and then they did processing, become, uh, disabled based on state and federal regulations. Most of the other ones are properties that we foreclosed on and now we own. So obviously, we can't, you know, pay ourselves taxes, we canceled, canceled the charge.
Okay, and the other ones?
And the other ones were refunding taxes. Unfortunately, we've had people double pay. Uh, I think when you got a bill, uh, and, I don't know if you're a mortgage company or not, but we sent out a bill, it was called advice copy on the bill, as well as we sent the bill to the mortgage company. But people have been doing it, they're taking that advice copy, paying it online, and the mortgage company is also paying. So there were double payments for the third quarter, and we're refunding the money to the, to taxpayers.
Okay. I just didn't know what it was. I guess this question would be directed to the city.
Will a list of streets to be repaired, um, made?
Yes.
To the public, open to the public? Like, can we go and see? Because it seems, I don't know, I don't want to say nothing, but just seem like the South Side get a lot of attention. And the North Side, we, some streets over there really isn't up. So I just wanted to know if we could get a list and the order in which you're going to be doing this.
So as the engineers, as I stated, as they start drafting up the new list, um, I'll defer to council as to how you should get it out to the public. But, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, you can direct me that. I don't foresee that being a problem sharing the list with the public at all. Um, but as we start drafting it out, right now we have an outdated list. Um, so we're getting ready to start a new list. The engineers have been directed to create that. And then it'll go before committee, and then we'll have, uh, something in the form of a draft where I think, you know, the public should be able to say, you know, well, I live on this street and it might be a little bit more serious than this, and we can take a closer look at it. So, um, we are going to work that way, is okay with council?
So I was just asking, some of those streets that really, really look bad, it's not because of something going on underneath those streets, it's because those streets haven't been addressed. I know the, the street on the first, North Side, North First Street, when they paved that, that was the first time they paved that street in fifty years. So that's why, and they just come and patch it. And the more they patch it, the more breaks up, especially with the cold or hot. It just breaks up, breaks up, breaks up, nobody really ever painted it. So a lot of those streets could just be, could all be surface action, just from not being done for so many years. The curves on my street and in front of my house haven't been done. And I've been in those, and they've been there personally for like forty-three years. And in forty-three years, they've never done my curve.
Well, I know, probably, if you guys have been on the street committee, um, probably, probably didn't start doing curves today until maybe what, about ten years ago? So we added that, we included that as part of the improvements. Years ago, they would just do the road and not the curves, don't know why. Um, but like within the last ten or fifteen years ago, we said if we're going to do the street, do the street and the curve. So when we do any street improvement, now it would include the curves.
Okay, well, they did the last street improvement on my block, when they paved. Remember, I told you all, they paved the street really nice? And then they came back, the water company dug it up, the gas company came back and dug it up. They never did our curve.
That wasn't, yeah, that wasn't a street improvement project, though. That's, it's a difference, that was a utility, um, project. But when the city deems it as a street improvement, we're going to do the curve and the streets.
Well, how do you make, how, how can I make that happen? Um, for my, for my street to be on that list?
Oh, we're going to, we're going to rate every street in, in the Pleasantville. We're going to rate it. And then that'll determine, you know, who gets their streets done based on the funding that we have available.
Well, my street doesn't, the street is okay. But the curves, not so okay. In fact, there's a girl that just had a, a, a big lawsuit because she fell in a hole on the curve. And the water thing, the lid wasn't on it. And she was disabled on a cane. And she fell all the way up to her hip, one leg. She could have suffered from, in that hole. Those curves really need to be done.
We'll take a look at it.
Renee, we are, and to the public, we are, uh, taking, uh, suggestions from the public as to who's streets are really bad. And of course, it'll be determined once we do the, the videifying and then, uh, you know, see what the engineer's saying also about the different streets. But we do take them from the public prior to, we, remember today, we rode around and we were looking at some. But the public has that, you know, they have the right to do that.
Okay.
Not to say it's going to happen, of course, everybody thinks theirs is the worst, but at least you'll make us aware of it.
Well, I try to be, um, as I'm, as possible by mine. And I mean, it's really the curves on my street. It's not so much the, the street as it is the curve now. Because they did come through and paved it, and they did the sidewalks. So, but they didn't do the curve, so. Um, I, I have another concern about the commercial trucks that are parked in residential areas, and they just sit there. And, or they're getting up and they're going to work in the morning, and all these trucks have big trailers on the back of them. Um, you know, you can't even park near your house or when you're getting off of work and you want to come in. Or if you go to, to the store and you come back, you don't have a parking space. Those, especially, um, let me tell you where I see them all the time. On the end of North First Street and Woodland Avenue. I mean, they just lined up down there. And I understand that they, they're working, those people are using those trucks for work and stuff. But can they take up all the residential parking with that?
No.
Because a lot, that's happening all over.
Let's show it up with our police department.
Okay. Um, I don't know why I keep getting that. Uh, Main Street. Main Street is starting to look a lot like Kansas. So I don't know what we could do about it. I don't have a suggestion right now. But I just wanted to say that it really doesn't look good on Main Street. Only one section of Main Street that I know of looks like, has any resemblance of somebody did something where it's going to look good. And that's down on the South Side, well, I guess that could say the South Side. Decatur Avenue where the grocery store runs and all those, uh, restaurants are, they fix up down there. But they're not coming, why they're not coming further down? You know? And is there anything we can do to get a real store on Main Street? We have a lot of dirty stores on Main Street.
Yes.
A lot of stores that I wouldn't even go into because of the people that's in front of them. They probably complain about that young man on Main Street, I get that. But I'm going to respond to that in a minute, but I get that. But there's a lot of people, they can do something about, and they're not doing it. You can't walk in a store and feel comfortable or feel safe. I know my grandson went to the store for my daughter and came to my house, and the police followed him there after he parked and harassed him because he just came out of that store. Well, the store's on Main Street. We're supposed to be able to use the stores on Main Street, not get harassed because we do.
Well, I don't think it's for lack of trying. We, um, the things that we tried to do, we, you know, the banners are up to try and make it, you know, pleasant or friendly. We put flowers in the flower pots. As far as what type of stores we have, we have what we have. There's, you know, we, we tried to attract other businesses, haven't been successful thus far.
Okay, maybe we could come up with a plan in the world with how we're going to get some more businesses in there.
If you have one that'll come here, there's a, a, a different type of business.
Yeah, a different type of business. Like everything on, everything on Main Street, almost everything, not everything, but almost everything on Main Street is Latino operated. We don't have anything for anybody else. And I, and I'd be worried that they, that they have it. But if you're going to have it, at least keep it clean and clean it up.
Yeah.
So, and if not, like, you know, maybe we can get somebody else in there. I wanted to address the young man.
Thank you, thank you for your time. You're spending time.
This guy's sitting up here in front of five cages, Larry. Ain't nobody said anything. I have one more issue. I have one more issue. Can I speak on that issue? Thank you very much. Um, the guy on Main Street, that young man is, is sick. He has a mental problem. And I, I watched him for years, and if you've seen him, he went from here, just kept going down. He hears voices and stuff. And so he started doing drugs to shut down the voices. The problem with that is you can't just take that person and lock him up. You can't just take that person and put him, um, in a rehab. You can't do it. It's against the law. And if they say don't want to go, you can't make them go. So his parents used to keep him, I think when he was like younger, he was always dressed in the finest clothes. He's a very handsome young man when he's all cleaned up. But it's nothing nobody can do, that's the law. So I don't know, like, who you could talk to about that, but he's just sick.
Well, he's going to stay out here and get blood over him.
I, well, I, I, it's nothing I can do. I have a little girl to come on my street every day, running red lights and everything else, because she's sick. And you can't do it. I call the ambulance, but they can't take her. It's against the law for them to take her without her permission. And they're never going to give you their permission. So I just wanted to say that, like, he's not, um, I don't think he's a throwaway or anything like that. He's just really sick.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Hi, uh, Karen to Pleasantville West End. I just wanted to know, um, the update on the, um, dump, the information about that. I didn't, I don't hear too much talk, too much movement about it. Just want to update of where we are with that.
And correct me?
There's been no talks on the transfer station at all?
We had a update from the state that deemed this city not, in easier terms, not in need of this dump. We, we checked three of the boxes that the state had for us. So the state has already done their work. We have nothing else to do. They have said, there is going to be no dump to come in, recycling, to come into the city of Pleasantville. The state has said no to it. What the operator can do is appeal to the state. They're rendering of the law, but it has nothing to do with the city anymore.
When you say operator, could you identify that for me?
The person who wants to, uh, get the recycling center, recycling, you know, thing done. He has to, himself, his business, has to appeal to the state on their decision. It's, we have nothing to do with it. The state has told us that it is not coming to the city.
Okay.
And as far as the city is kind of concerned, it, it's on. But he does have the right to appeal.
Okay, yeah, I understand. So you didn't?
That, this is new information to me. I, um, when I said there's been no further talks on, there's been no further talks on that I've been involved in.
Okay, but you knew this information that came down from the state?
I'm not aware of it. Not the information that came from the state, and that they're saying that there's definitely no transfer station. No, I can't say that I know that. I can say, no, I don't know that.
Okay, so, so Ms. Family Laro, are you the only one that have this information?
Let me, let me just clarify something if I can. So I think it's the way it's being worded that maybe, maybe receiving it a little different. What the councilwoman is explaining, which has been explained to council, is that the city of Pleasantville is considered by designation under the state, uh, of a burdened community, which means that over, under DEP, all burdened communities have to go through a waiver process if they want some type of this, of business like that in the community. So the, uh, operator would have to go through that process to, uh, to receive a waiver. And so that's not on the owners of the city, it's the operators, it's the owners, it's the owners going to operate to go through that process.
Okay, so once the operator go through that process, and if he's, if the person is successful, then would the city have anything to do with it then? Or can that operator just appeal? And when they appeal, and then that will be a dump, will be a recycling area? Is that how it works?
I think it's more to the process than that. Um, so it wouldn't be fair to kind of answer that question now. But because that is such a process, and to our knowledge, the owner hasn't gone through the process. That's why Mayor Sam, what she's saying that is stagnant at this moment because they haven't gone through that process.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Congress, the mayor?
Congress, uh, mayor, mayor?
Yes.
You have the Congress?
No.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and we do hear all your concerns. I also, um, wanted to share that, uh, in reference to what, uh, Renee Brown was saying as far as, um, us wanting other businesses. This past week, uh, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, I went to a convention, a convening, African-American Chamber of Commerce convening, uh, Philadelphia, New Jersey. It's a tri-state, uh, Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware. And I received, um, an award, which is a champion award, and I'm glad to get it. Very proud. It was mayors from all over the, African-American mayors from all up the country. And they were celebrating African-American Month. And, um, with that, they, there's so many different resources. It was just so uplifting being there, being around positive, just professional people. It was just so uplifting being there, being around positive, just professional people that, you know, African-Americans that were just trying to do the same thing that we're doing here, and sharing what they're doing in their towns, and there's so many resources available that we are just, you know, we just have to tap into. Things available, if you don't take advantage of it, I mean, it's there for the taking, if, you know, if you qualify. So I was happy to be there, but in reference to that, everything that we did was, um, was, we honored all the African-American restaurants, the, they, Philadelphia doesn't have an African-American club, I mean, hotel, so, you know, there was no hotels, but everything else that we did was, you know, just patronizing African-American businesses, and everyone's sticking together, and it just shows me that in our area, that's what we have to do here to, to be a success and tap into the resources that we have. So, yes, I was proud to receive this award, I was proud and happy to be at the conference, and I just know that here, there's things that we want to do here, we want what the other big cities have, we just have to tap into the resources and, and do it, and work on the things that we have and make them happen, to have resources and economic development coming in here.
Can I quickly say that all of you who are invited, just come to the board meetings, we have a board meeting. And if you come out to the board meeting, we discuss stuff like that, and it's on a positive, I mean, a couple of suggestions.
Excuse me.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank the community for coming up, raising your concerns, they don't go unnoticed. Personally running down and go through with later, later, uh, time. Mr. Harmon, I've been, since that, stepped into council and after that bridge, and I'm hoping to get it done, I'll ask for an update every so often, so I'm right there with you. And I want to thank the Long County Commissioners for coming here today and making a present, thank you. I hope it's not the last time, and thank you for the update on the roads. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, I just want everybody to know, on August seventeenth, which will be Wednesday, we're having food distribution at Closeville Fellowship on that one-on-one North First Street. Y'all guys could come out and get your blessings, we'll be out there from twelve to two o'clock, three o'clock. So come on, let everybody know that we're having food distribution out there on Wednesday. Thank you, and have a blessed evening.
I just like, the national night out that we had on, on the second, was wonderful. I would encourage everybody who doesn't go to please go, because it's always a good night, and it puts the, it is the true meaning of the word "community", when everybody comes out for one united thing, and that's what we needed in Pleasantville. And Mr. Archie, I'm with you. Everybody have a nice night.
I just want to go over the, um, the monthly report from the rep. Just a reminder that we do have aerobics there, boxing, basketball, soccer, and, um, a weight and health and wellness room, and, um, but I have that, that's the monthly meeting for the rep. Um, I want to piggyback off of Ms. Papalar, National Night Out was another success for the city of Pleasantville. I want to say thanks to the chief who had me a hundred feet in the air. That was a great experience for me. Commissioner Kern, Commissioner Grisley, thanks for coming to our meeting. If you all could just let us know when your next meeting is?
Tomorrow.
Oh, wait, four o'clock?
Four o'clock tomorrow.
So tomorrow at four o'clock, and congratulations, Mayor, on your award.
Thank you.
I was just reminded, um, we have an executive session, so I was, mad, clerk.
Finish what council's coming.
Yeah, it finished.
Have you finished? I just wanted, I just wanted, before we do, say, Commissioner Grisley and Commissioner Kern, I thank you for coming out, and I know that a couple of times this summer, I was going to get to the meetings, but it's hard to get over there at four o'clock, so, Maureen, if you would just call me once in a while and, you know, let me know what's going on, I'd appreciate it, between you and Corsey.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
David, thanks for coming out, and thank you for all your concerns. I started off the wrong foot, Mr. Harmon, I allowed you to do what, what you did, and then it kind of slipped a little bit, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you brought what you brought to us. Congratulations on your presentation, thank you again, and we'll set up a different form anytime you have to set up a presentation, something that you want to present, that you want to do. We have a little bit of summer left, so everybody be safe, and a great couple days that is left in this summer. At this moment, I have a motion to go into executive session for, for items, right? For contractual items.
Motion.
We don't.
Redevelopment.
Second.
All the favor?
No.
Every time, I was going to executive session for redevelopment, and thank you.
During the executive session, city council discussed with ideal technology and key chat, and I'm telling you, real estate regarding their background and findings related to their business. I know action was taken at the time, just discussions regarding their background.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn, motion.
Second.
All the favor?
Bye.